Okay. Uh, we might as well. Has everybody gone through the minutes from last meeting?
I've got it covered, yes.
Pardon me?
Yes.
Yeah, they look good to me.
Okay, everybody's good with them? Anybody want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion, we accept them as recorded.
Five second, while their seconds, all those in favor, all those opposed, good. Uh, whole business, one fifty-four Biskie Road, Colby and Gale, you want to come up, Matt? You sent registers, letters out to all your butters and all that stuff, I saw that, and emails I got from town hall.
Yep.
Um. I mean, this is, the project's fairly small, it seems to be complete, does anybody have any question?
No, I certainly agree, it's complete.
Yeah.
Were we supposed to have like a?
Public hearing.
A public hearing on it?
That's what this is.
Oh, we got.
Okay.
I don't, I don't have that on my agenda.
It's not on there, but we have to have one, so that's why we tried as we could last month.
That's why we're here.
That's why we're here.
All right. Uh, so I guess what we'll do is we'll start a public hearing for the one fifty-four Biskie Road Colby and Gale addition, map O three lot O seven. Is anybody from the public who wants to have anything to say about this? That was a quick public hearing.
Well, should we, should we have them briefly describe it just because it's being brought?
Would you like to describe the project? The just technicalities?
Twenty-five words alone.
It's a small addition to our existing office. That will look just like our existing office in all our other buildings.
Okay. Uh.
We have to make a motion to close the hearing. Okay, I'd like to make a motion with those public hearing.
Okay, do I have a second? Second, all those in favor, all those opposed, there you go. Okay, we'll get back on that, like I said, it wasn't in my agenda, so I skipped right over it. Uh. And once again, like I said before, I believe I've looked that over, what was sent to me by email from the town, it all seems to be in good shape, I mean, it's not a it's not a dramatic impact on anything at all, so. And nobody has any questions at all? Anybody want to make a motion?
Well. This project involved land use approvals, site law, site plan review approval.
Mm-hmm.
And shoreline zoning.
So how would you let them see it on that?
Well. In the back, right?
Mm-hmm, yeah, the findings of fact.
The findings of fact.
Mm-hmm.
But in the conclusions.
Mm-hmm.
Um, our planner has summarized that, um.
I did read these, by the way.
Yeah, I'm not, we don't need to, we don't need to to review these necessarily, they maybe just incorporate them by reference.
That's, you know, I was thinking what we might, what you may want to do going forward is um, like adopt or approve the findings of fact and uh, conclusions of law as.
Definitely interesting thing that we've never done, but it makes sense.
Yeah, that, because that way basically everything that's in there becomes like your decision and this is, this backs it up and there shouldn't be any any conclude, uh, confusion about whether or not the board finds this, because like, I write it down, it doesn't mean anything, I'm not on the board, I don't have decision-making power.
Mm-hmm.
You all do, so. Um, that way, that's, you know.
Because it's kind of, it's actually for a simple project, it's kind of like a complex, a strangely complex, um, findings of fact.
Which is something that I would like to talk to the board about at the, at the end of the meeting.
But just because it, it, it involves intersection of all these different ordinances.
Yeah, right, it, it's a small project that gets caught up in the, the the applicability of all of these, these ordinances, which it probably was more difficult than you imagined it was gonna be.
The world we live in nowadays.
And, yeah, so, but we, that's, we can talk about that.
So I guess I'd like to make a motion that we adopt the findings of fact and conclusions of law for the land use approval, site plan review approval, and the shoreline zoning approval for the Colby and Gale office expansion on one fifty-four Biskie Road.
Nicely done.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, do I have? All seconded, okay, all those in favor? All those opposed? Okay.
All right.
Great, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Your approval.
Don't, don't we have to approve this also?
Approve.
The project also besides just adopting this?
Uh, adopting this?
And then, you know what, that's.
Prove it.
Yeah, and, and I'll try and nail down exactly what the
The procedure.
Appropriate language would be.
Okay.
But, well, if you want to vote to approve the project.
So.
Consistent with the findings of fact, that would probably be.
Think that would be good, does anybody want to make a motion on that?
You did such a good job, you're on.
Okay, I'd like to, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the project based on the findings of fact and the conclusions of law.
Yeah, yeah.
It's just a different, a bit, a bit different.
Yeah, and that's, like I said, I'll try and figure out what like a good
Okay.
Raise is, so that we can just do it in one motion next time.
For the Colby and Gale office expansion.
Okay, I'll second that now.
Okay, all those in favor, all those opposed, now you go, Matt.
Now you can really go.
So I just want to say, you did a really beautiful job on this.
Thank you.
Nice job.
And, and it made me, it made me I mean, there was just a huge amount of thought.
The.
In all, in all of this.
The site plan review is you know, I, I, we can, I'll try and keep it brief, but it's a long, a long review to do because there's so many little things in there. But even though it is, is a little bit silly to be doing it for, I think, a project of this scale, like that's what the ordinance says, so I went through all of it.
And I, and it was a really good description of all the, how it met all the performance standards.
Yeah, well, that I think is just, is necessary, um, if you're going to approve it, you, you need to be able to say it meets the standard and here is what, how it meets the standard, so that if someone comes back and pushes back and said, no, you shouldn't have approved that. You can say, no, well, no, here's, here's why, here's how it meets it.
Nice job, yeah.
Yeah, and the conclusions of law, like the, how, how you listed everything at the end, it's really good, I thought.
Yeah.
I mean, because that sort of, that sort of condensed everything.
That's the idea, although it was a long document, so.
All right.
Uh, but good, I, well, I appreciate that you appreciate it.
So.
I do too.
I have one thing, in here you mentioned a town's licensed plumbing inspector, do we have one?
Yeah, that's George, that's the code of sports move, so. Um, yep. All right, so.
Onto the subdivision.
Okay, so our next one is Alwive Lane, Belvedere Road, Coastal Rivers, MAPC subdivision application.
Yeah, and I, I'll just explain while you sit down that um, I am making the assumption, when you look at the ordinance, um, if there's already approved subdivision plan, which there is, um, this is gonna, this would be an amendment, and the, the changes that they're, that they're proposing, I don't think it's necessary to go through that, again, that whole, like, all of the standards for subdivision to say is this, do you, do you need to meet every standard in there, again, do we need to go through that whole process to check again? Because they're just moving two lines, you know, they're not proposing any changes, this isn't, they're not proposing new development on there, um, especially with what you're proposing with like a path, that's not like you're putting new buildings, so. You know, that's your decision, if you want to go through the whole review process, I, I did not, um, I thought that it might be unnecessary, but I just wanted to at least mention that, that so far what we're go, what I've reviewed is.
All right, you want to explain?
Sure, yeah, so, um, Michael's got some maps, but that pathway, so first, I'm Stephen Huffnagle, Executive Director of Coastal Rivers, and Brooke Spence from, from Miles slash, looking how, is here with me, and also, also Highly West. Um, you're extending that walkable, um, all-access trail that now connects Round Top Farm to Great Salt Base. That's right now a couple thousand feet, we're going to add another mile to that. Part of that runs right along the wetland out by Belvedere Road. So as we got into construction and design, we realized that if we moved inbound, um, up, up slope, basically, uh, about, oh, a hundred feet or so, we could save a lot on boardwalks and construction, so a Mr. Wheeler who owns part of a lot um, is willing to sell us a chunk of his land, and the hospital is willing to donate as a partnership for public health and so forth between Coastal Rivers and the hospital to donate a chunk of their land to Coastal Rivers. So to do that would require reconfiguring the lots in the subdivision at Belvedere Corner, so that's basically what, what this represents. So the, I at least got some of the specifics on, if there's more from that in terms of where the lines go and, and what that means, but it's a reconfiguration of the subdivision to allow a parcel that's long and skinny to fit the trail, basically.
We applied the stricter square footage required to each lot, early zone, it's a straddles to the islands. C two and the rural district, so we complied with the higher eighty thousand square foot standard for Mr. Wheeler's lot. And, um. We looked up together with Michael the minimum, uh, uh, square footage that Mr. Wheeler needed because he has a duplex and, uh, the land use ordinance, I believe, says you need at least sixty thousand square feet per duplex, and we're Mr. Wheeler's being left with lot number two with eighty thousand square feet, so he's, he's over that threshold. And, um. Uh, and that's pretty much it, uh, this amendment reflects an agreement that uh, Mr. Wheeler's predecessor and Miles entered into, um, about access to Mr. Wheeler's lot two, even though there's a fifty-foot wide right-of-way on the subdivision amendment, Mr. Wheeler agreed to limit, or actually Neil Sprague owned this before Mr. Wheeler, still Neil Sprague agreed to limit the right-of-way to a sixteen-foot, you know, driveway across his property, but there is technically a fifty-foot wide right-of-way across the property, but they have a private deal that Mr. Wheeler will stick to the sixteen-foot driveway, sixteen-foot wide driveway. So a bit of an oddity, and, uh, and the hospital's going to give Coastal Rivers, uh, uh, an easement to use from time to time to get to their lot across, um, uh, the hospital's lot because of the wetlands issue. That's basically it in summary.
Yeah, I believe what I put in the, the findings of fact for this was, you know, but we looked through, I listed the minimum required square footage for any of the lots, and they, it all meets it, depending, it, it depends on which uh, zone it falls into, some of them are all within C two, I don't think any of them are entirely within rural, but anything that falls up at all within rural meets the standard for rural, which is, is more of a burden. Um, and this is a duplex, we found there's a weird little note in land use that duplexes only require I think it was like fifty percent of the, or no, they only need thirty thousand square feet per unit. So this requires sixty thousand square feet. Which is, which they, they need rather than needing eighty thousand square feet per, per unit.
Um. At least they're getting to forty thousand square.
Right, right, so, so that, um, and the frontage, uh, on here, they, they meet the minimum frontage requirement. Um. Which for duplexes like a hundred and fifty. Which for duplex is like a hundred and fifty percent of whatever the base. Uh, standard is. And so this is where it maybe is a little bit weird that the original subdivision that was approved by the board. And that hasn't been up, up, hasn't been amended, or no amendments have been approved by the board. All over the frontage. That. Was on that original plan still. It, it still exists. Um, and so they, it meets the standard, it's just, for whatever reason, uh. I guess Mr. Wheeler or whoever the property owner was said, they're only gonna use a tiny bit of. You know, a more narrow frontage, but. That really wasn't approved by the board, so the.
You mean the frontage on the Belvedere?
On, no, the front, the lot frontage on, yeah, is it Elwif Lane? Yeah.
Okay.
So it's like kind of a technicality, but they've got enough frontage, um, according to the. Originally approved, um, ordinance and those. Easements or those right of ways and they will, according to this. Subdivision plan, so.
So, so this is behind the drop off, or right in front of the drop off?
The, the property that just makes about. Yes, you go down, oh, sorry.
Yeah, so you, you know, you go down the drop off, you drop off on one side and then you generally can drive back around, so it'd be just beyond that, in that wooded area. Um, there's like a point six, three or six, seven acre swath. Um, that's back there, but we would provide coastal river, rivers access to get to that property. Um, so, just to build the, build the walkway as well as for maintenance every five years or so. Um, and it would just basically be allowing them to get their equipment back in there so that they can build, build the pathway.
So, but there is a hundred feet still on the Belvedere. Even though that's difficult to access.
Oh, yeah, uh, uh, on edge, the, the, on Belvedere, we saw that hole, there's still well over a hundred feet on Belvedere Road.
Okay.
We're not, we wouldn't be competing that in any way whatsoever, it's just. Just access.
The new lot three has a hundred feet of pride.
Yeah, I saw that.
And the hospital became far and says to that.
I don't think there were any other outstanding issues that I saw.
No, I looked at it myself, I didn't see anything.
Yeah.
That'd be great to have that trail, yeah, extended.
That was the, it came about sort of from the two thousand eight bike pad plan, there was, um. The sense of like, we need a safe bike trail for, so kids can, kids can ride it and, uh. Hitch training wheels, have a, have a spot that's safer as well, so it's walk-in bikes.
What's the path gonna be made out of?
It's a, it's compacted stone dust.
Yep.
So it's an engineered trail underneath, like, um, crushed rock underneath and compacted stone dust on top.
Like they have at the Shell Mid.
Yeah, the same, yeah, exactly, yep, continuation of that, yeah, so, it's a nice surface, don't get too hot. It's good for, uh, it's also, yeah, it's a good, it's a good surface.
Anybody got any more questions? Um, so. I'm all set. All set.
I think if the. Board is, uh, thinking of approving it, that we can probably do the same thing we did with the. Last application, yes, and maybe just say.
Uh, make, I can make a motion to. Um. To approve the project based on the findings of fact and conclusions of law. For the land use review and the subdivision plan amendment for Coastal Rivers. Conservation Trust Connection. Um. On Elwif Lane and Belvedere Road.
Yeah.
Do I have a second?
A second, go ahead.
No, go ahead.
All those in favor? All those opposed? And we need to vote to actually prove that at this point?
No, I think that.
She's got the wording.
That's, uh, yeah, right. I'm not trying to make it more complicated than it needs to be, so. Um. Then what we can do, I know you, since we. We, we'll need the board to sign the, uh, approved plan.
Yeah.
So that they can take that and record the signed version at the registry of deeds, so. Um.
Why don't we move that right there and we'll just spread them, like, right, let me move that microphone.
Did you say it was like an incomplete, um, application or there was some issue before?
This one's?
Yeah.
No, I think there were, there were a couple of things that I had requested from the applicant, which they've since provided me, it's, it's the, um. It was just basically a, uh, some, some proof that they had standing. Because they didn't own, they don't own the property yet, so it's kinda, you don't want, anyway, they provided a option to purchase and. Um, basically a letter from. Uh, Brooks Betts.
Yep.
Saying. The main health is.
Yeah.
So.
Okay.
That was it.
That's pretty amazing. That's gonna be a great path.
Yeah.
Yeah, a good, a good, uh. Is that where it goes off Church Street? Is that where that little? Path with the chain? Almost looks like a driveway.
Oh, I think.
Oh, the, that, that used to belong to George Freeman, that was retained. Where it's gonna start, um.
Yeah, I don't, you can probably just sign.
No.
One.
Oh.
Are they all the same?
Is there all the same, yeah?
I mean, do you mean the dotted red?
Yeah.
Yeah, the dotted red is, is just, is right at the.
Yeah, so maybe we could just sign two. Three, okay, yeah, that's.
I mean, where it starts on Church Street. Oh, it does, okay, yeah, you're right, you're right. I don't think that they've built that though yet. I think it's just a grassy, yeah.
Yeah, I think we'll wanna keep one and then.
And we need to sign a minute. Remember, we approved.
We, yeah, I have some minutes to, um.
It's sentenced.
To sign, yeah. I, I, I'll just, we can sign this up. Yes. Okay, I assumed that you did with no changes, so.
Oh, yeah, 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 oh, right, yeah. Maybe they're all at some point.
You and me both. Yeah, I can't imagine. Too many people are gonna be opposed to, uh.
Yeah.
Mixed use.
Oh, congrats.
Path through conserved land, but, yeah.
I'm usually walking trails outside, but often.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
I got plenty of other places to go, we'd like that.
Yeah, I mean, especially the, what they're talking about, the crushed, crushed stone, those, I mean, that's a nice, easy, super.
Yeah.
Not maybe as. Challenging or interesting as some other, but it's, that's a great spot.
Well, one thing they did up there that I really liked, they got a, they actually have a trail. It was down from. You know, the center right here, the, the bunch of woodlands that belongs to a, a private property that belongs to an individual who. Donated a right of way for free dogs.
Really?
Yeah, so you can, there's a huge field right here, goes all the way down to Oyster Creek.
Yeah.
And there's a lone path all the way down through, circles around, comes all the way back, and it's all for free dogs. Dogs off leash.
Really?
Yep.
That's great, that's, that's very good.
Dog up there, let it run. We let it run anyway, quite often, but.
Yeah. That's something, I mean, that's, that's even more than like a dog park, but. That was something that's been coming up at the comp plan meetings, is people walk somewhere and run, their dogs.
Yeah.
Well, we do.
Off leash and.
Yeah, and we have.
So.
It's mostly dog park, so.
Yeah, yeah, well, if you get big enough, right, then you don't necessarily need to fence it in. Sometimes it's hard to get all that land.
Yeah, like, yeah, right.
Five, you got all five?
Yeah.
You need a lot of.
Yeah.
Yes, but.
Two or three weeks ago, nice.
I think the trail is still going around all the place.
Yeah.
Both there and.
Moving.
Sure.
Oh, you are, oh, good.
Yeah, we have this there, right?
Right. Perfect, thank you.
So for a long time you were trying to make the, the trail go along the shore, right? And you were kind of frustrated by that.
It comes, this comes in inbound more.
I know, and then, and then you finally said, wait.
Yeah, yes.
Do this.
It was just.
This is brilliant.
It was too wet.
Yeah.
That goes under the bridge, right?
Under the bridge, yeah, down, down on the slope.
Sure. I've been down there many a time.
Yeah, yeah, oh, it's a cool spot.
Yeah.
They finally got engineering for that, so, so fundraiser to do, so a couple, couple of years yet, but.
Well.
We can now, we can now go forward.
Yep.
Thanks so much.
Yeah.
Thanks.
That's the period in the ass. Went from the farmer's market all the way to that center. Got him, yeah, the guy. Alright, so we're back to land review and its amendments.
Yes. I'm just.
I have a question.
Yes.
So. These amendments were gonna be the little tweaks, and then we're gonna address some bigger policy issues.
Mm-hmm.
But I thought we were gonna do the little tweaks, we're gonna be, um, brought up to vote at the last election, you know, I mean, I feel like. The timeline for this has gotten kind of extended, so. Are we really gonna like? Do this in two parts still, is it?
Well, that's, um. That's up to you all. I mean, there's only so much time I have to, to get, and there's a lot. Um, but. Uh, bless you, uh, it's, so it's up to you how, how you wanna do it. Um, I will say one of the things that I have been. I was, I put together a town planner's report, and one of the things in it is. Just general ordinance maintenance, not just updating the site plan review. Um. And because there's a lot of things that I think, in addition to what we've addressed here. Which is, some of it are tweaks, some of it's clarifying what the screening, which is great. But there's also like the process of a lot of this, I think, is. For some projects can be overkill, like with Colby and Gale, I think is a pretty perfect example of like, do. Do you need to put? Smaller projects that aren't gonna have as much of an impact through. Site plan review and. My. My, my feeling on with site plan, uh, subdivision. Land use is not that you don't regulate and, and, you know, uh, wire. Uh, all the information and everything, but it's, if it's. Because it's such a heavy lift, small projects, which, from what I gather, and everybody's got different opinions, but. Smaller scale projects, um, just can't make that, they can't make it over that hurdle, because it's just, it's very expensive, so what you end up doing is unintentionally. Kind of encouraging. Not, you know, I know we, we, we don't allow like buildings over. Forty thousand square feet or whatever the, the limit is, but you kind of. You kind of encourage, those are the only projects that can make it through the site plan review and the, and all of that, so. You kind of discourage probably the development that you want, small scale, maybe infill development. And you kind of, the only people that are get, can kind of get through, though. The process tend to be the one that can hire consultants and, you know, have the money to do that, so I think that, so I. Raise all of this as, I think there's, we should have a conversation about. If we can streamline the process so that development that the town likes. Can, you know, relatively easily go through, we make sure obviously that it conforms, but then development that. Is larger, has larger impacts, gets reviewed, and then you can just basically, ideally, we can prohibit anything the town doesn't like. Defining that is gonna be the challenge, but, um.
Does Newcastle? Do things differently than we do?
Yeah, but, I mean, every town does things differently.
I mean, do they have a, a higher threshold?
They do for.
For project, for review of, like, site location projects.
Yes. And one of their intentions, when they, you know, they read, I'm sure everybody knows, like, they went through the comp plan process several years ago, and then. A direct outcome of that was overhauling their, um, their zoning. And one of the things that they focused on was pushing more review to the code enforcement officer. Um, and keeping things from, not everything, obviously, but keeping more projects. That just don't have to go before the planning board, because it's a slower, you know, heavier lift, um. So it's not everything, certainly, but. More projects come before this board, that if it was in Newcastle, wouldn't come before this board.
You think, on the, on the other hand, do you think there's some projects that just go through code enforcement? This, you know, review that probably should come to the. Planning board? I mean, I, I think Bob Fons had mentioned something like that at one point. He wondered why the, the code enforcement officer handles so, so many projects sometimes.
That, I don't know, um. We, I, I'd have to. I'd have to go and see exactly what George is, because I don't really see a lot of the projects that George is approving. It's one of the things that I wanna get. More involved with is just kind of seeing what he's, he approves, that I have some idea.
And, and actually, we should have like a regular report from the code enforcement officer, don't you think, as the planning board? Like, for instance, there's a big, some big projects on Water Street. Um.
Yeah.
And, and there's no, I mean, I, they're really, they're big, big projects.
Jacob's old house?
Yeah.
Well, it's a remodel.
Well, you could say it's a remodel, but they're, they're digging really big holes and they're, they're. They're building a lot more living area and a big garage, you know. Yeah.
I don't, I don't know exactly.
But, I mean, and not, not, maybe, it's fine, but it just sort of surprised me that.
Well, and, and this is. The conversation that, you know, you, you all need to have is. But what kind, what types of projects do you want to review? Um, my, my thinking and, and it typically is, I think, makes. The most sense if you can. Have a good, clean, clear ordinance that basically sets standards, which you, you know what? Someone comes to the town and says, I wanna build whatever, you look at the ordinance and it's like, yeah, okay, well, you can't do that, or you can do that.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and. And the, using the, just like the process that's laid out in the ordinance as a tool to say like, oh, you know. If you want more ADUs in town, basically, it's like, that can be George, the code enforcement officer, just can approve ADUs as long as they. You know, fit in a certain box, so to speak, um, and that means that people who are like, you know, oh, I wanna do something, like, oh, it's so easy to do. This little thing that's gonna add a unit. Um. And then if they wanna come and build a, you know, commercial strip on Upper Main Street, that it's like. Either, no, you just can't do that, um, or. If you wanna do it, like, you have to go to the planning board to make sure that you're meeting certain, certain standards, but the standard should be pretty clear. Kind of all the time, because then. You don't really want a project to come in and have the board say, we're rejecting it because we don't like your project, should be.
Can't do that.
Right, right, that's. But if you have kind of a messy ordinance, then it's, it's harder to, to, to say like, yeah, you can do this, and no, you can't do that. Um.
Well, so you're saying some of our ordinances are messy.
Some, some of them may be messy.
Okay, well, we gotta focus on this, this ordinance, though, first.
Site, yeah, and some, there's also some of this, some of the stuff in land use should probably be in. Site plan, some of the stuff in site plan should be in land use, like, there's, and, and we can. All of this is, there's, there's. all of this is, there's a, there's a lot to to consider. So I I I say that because some of the stuff that's in the site plan that we're addressing now, it's great, like we can, we can address it. Um, but I think that before we start getting too deep into, you know, trying to fix design standards, we should make sure we understand kind of what the scope is that can be addressed and what you want to address so that we're we're not just um you you know, one of the things that would be great is if all the ordinances were more consistent with each other. Sometimes, you know, you get standards that kind of pop up in three different, you know, so is it in the land use or is it in the? And that really, I think, to adequately address that, you want to make sure that we have a good understanding of when are these ordinances applicable? Because if land use is applicable to everything, then if there's standards that you want to pl- applicable everywhere in the town, you know, you put them in in land use for the most part, right? And then i- i- if it's appropriate to be in there. And then if there's some things that you only want to be, especially design standards, you only want to be applicable or only want to check for larger projects, you can, you know, set a standard that says projects above. You know, we have some of this for large scale development.
Oh.
But sometimes you get like seventy five hundred square feet isn't necessarily a huge project. So this is where we can, I think we can kind of make certain things applicable, and not that we need multiple, multiple tiers of projects, but maybe you have, you know, the stuff that we know. It's like going to be low impact, the town likes it, we know we want it in this location. That doesn't have to come to the planning board. And then there's stuff that's fairly easy that comes to the planning board. It's a little bit figure might have an impact, so you want the planning board looking at it. And then there's stuff that you're like, you know, we don't want this, or it's going to have a big impact. And that's when you need to, you tell them, get engineers, get consultants, get everything. So they come with a whole, you know, posse and give you all the information that you want and answer all your questions. Um.
So the stuff that doesn't come before the board that gets approved by you or by George?
George.
Okay.
Yeah. I mean, we you, it doesn't, you can and this is a a a larger kind of issue um that at some point, Emmer Scott will have to address. Right now, we don't have to because of the population, like the state does not require municipalities under, I think, four thousand people to do building inspections and enforce the, you know, state building codes and things like that. We do have to enforce plumbing, which is why George is also a licensed, he's the licensed plumbing inspector. Um, so when people come to get building permits, they don't need to submit construction drawings because we're not checking for building code. But at some point, you know, and and it's probably not going to be next year, but at some point in the future, you know, we may need to have someone who and it's going to take a lot more time, it's going to have to go out to every new construction project and look and say, yep, okay, this meets fire, this meets electrical. Um, and so at that point, there may be a kind of a, it might make sense to have a little bit of a separation of code and building and planning so that you know, in a lot of, in a lot, in a lot of larger communities, you have a planning board that operates very much like this. And then you have a like a planning department that'll do the administrative reviews. Um, and then you have building department where once you've gotten your planning approvals, then you go to the building department. It's a just different. You know, now the 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 permits that George is issuing are kind of like joint planning approval and building approval. So.
At at one point, Matt, the previous town manager, had a like a mini committee, remember? He he had assembled like the the town, the planner, maybe Matt and the code enforcement officer would review like once a week the projects.
Hmm.
You know, I I but but then that that went away or, you know, things changed.
Yeah. I think Bath does a for some projects like the, with the ones that would get administrative approval that wouldn't go through, that wouldn't come before the planning board. They still would be looked at by like the public works department, by chief of police, fire department. So they would, and they would get together, I think it was weekly or every two weeks, and they would do something like that. So you know, I don't, I'm not suggesting that we need to start, you know, creating these completely different or you know, I I and I'm, last thing I want to do is create more work. Um, but I do think that the ordinances could be streamlined and with a a recognition that at some point, you know, then it can be expanded to meet the building code enforcement, if that ever happens, that we have to do that. Um.
So it sort of seems like you think that maybe we should be focusing on the land use ordinance.
I mean, I think the land use ordinance is the core. That's like the central, if you know what you, if you have a vision of what you want the development in town to look like, I think land use is kind of the the start. Um, and then site plan, I think as far as I can tell is more, the intention is is that it would be regulations for larger projects. But if you look at, like, if you look at Newcastle, they've got their kind of their form based code, more or less, they have um plenty of design standards for buildings that are that really aren't that that would kind of maybe fit better in our land use ordinance than if, than in our site plan re ordinance. They have, if you look at their ordinance, they have kind of chapters, there's site standards and there's building standards. Um, and then there's just other general standards. And so it's not a kind of a one for one comparison. But um I think design standards probably make some sense here. I think when I talk to people about, you know, you all and and other residents about what they're concerned about or what they care about, some certainly, uh at least some of it is design, and it doesn't have to be, you know, it has to be in the, you know, Romanesque style, but it can be, you know, the the width of the building, the pitch of the roof, it can be kind of
Scale.
Yeah, scale, it can be kind of um uh, you know, broad brush standards, but um, it at least starts to I think get it when, you know, when you talk about scale, that's a, that's important. That's one of the things that I I think people who are who react very strongly against big box stores is they're they're just not of a relatable scale to most people. They're just these big expansive.
Okay, so I mean, that's a whole nother huge conversation.
Absolutely.
About pulling the 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 ordinance standards, making them less dimensional based and more form based. But the this this work that is, I mean, is Isabel doing it? Are you doing it? Who's?
I I went through this, this was all, I mean, most of it is from what she did. I went through and updated some things.
Project now?
No, I don't think so.
She's still doing this?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
What do we do with this right now is what I'm saying. I mean, we want to.
There's a lot in this. So my thinking is what 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 I had to do to get my brain around it was to go through and like r- read it and look at what the existing code said and said, uh, you know, okay, this does make sense. So I tried to get it to a point now where what you've got in there is you'll be able to tell what is new language. For the most part, I I will tell you, there are some things that I just forgot to highlight yellow, but like minor things. Um, new language and it should be all highlighted in yellow. And then stuff that's just moved is underlined because it's, you know, it was touched. And then there's stuff that's removed, which is crossed out.
Yeah.
Um, some of the stuff that was crossed out is um, like it would, it might pop up somewhere else, was maybe it was moved. So I should probably go, maybe I can, if I didn't, I can highlight the stuff that was deleted. But I think like that's the de- dealing with this stuff is just, it's not easy. So however you all like it, I'm happy to kind of present it to you that way. But I still think at the end of the day, i- unless there's some other way that I I'm not, I can't conceive of. It's like, we need to sit down and read through it and basically say, yeah, this works or no, this doesn't work.
What do we have next month? Anything that you know coming up?
Yeah, the next um I know there's probably going to be, well, Isabel's going to come and give a update on the comp plan. There's also um at least one application for apartments in the downtown, existing building. They want to convert, they want to convert it to apartments. Um, and I think there was one other thing on that agenda.
So it sounds like there's a fair amount on the next agenda, but in this, in this sounds like it needs a meeting in itself. That's the last thing I want to do is have another meeting, but I don't know how else we can do this. And I would suggest that everybody gets it from the town, a printed copy of this, if it's highlighted in color, whatever it is that we need to do, to sit down and go over it because I can't do it on an iPad and I can't do it at all on the same
Yeah.
colored paper like it is. So and we could have just a meeting for that.
I think, I think that's a good idea.
Yeah.
Like a like workshop and and we can advertise it if people want to show up and, you know, a public meeting.
Let's, let's do one of our own first and let's get through this and then we can have that. I mean, there's no sense to rush this. So.
Are we allowed to have meetings on our own?
Well.
No, it's a, it's a public, it's open to the public, but don't advertise for people to come in and do it. Let's sit down.
Okay.
This group, go over this and then see, get a starting point and see how far we can get with it.
Yeah.
But it has to be just that that we do.
Yeah, I did.
I put a limit to it so that we're not here to the hours of the night.
Yeah. What I'll do is I will um I will definitely print it for you all, get printed copies. I'll go through comb through it one more time to make sure that it's all clean so that then I'll print that for you. You can either come pick it up ahead of time, which I would recommend because, you know, you want to be familiar with it. Um, and then at the next meeting, we can go through and we can have, we can discuss, you know, what uh.
What do, do the next, the next regular planning board meeting?
No, but whenever we schedule, I I will have to.
Be a good.
So could you, can you email us all when you have that ready for us to come by and pick it up?
Yep.
And then do we tonight pick a night? Of course, of course, it's December, so everyone's going to get busy, but
Yeah.
Is there a a night that we can do in December?
Or or end of November?
Sure. Yeah, I mean, it's up to you all when you want. I think um I I will tell you, I don't think there's a free night for this room before Thanksgiving. Just scheduling the next comp plan committee meeting was difficult uh because there's just a lot going on. But that week of the twenty seventh, um this room is open Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, the twenty seventh, twenty eighth, twenty ninth.
That'd be fine. We'll do it on the twenty eighth. I'm not following Mondays.
The, okay, Tuesday, yeah, that's.
You guys want to do it on the twenty eighth?
I'll buy it.
I can do it. I can do that.
Right on, yeah.
Sure.
Okay. Do you want to do it at at six o'clock?
Yeah, that's fine.
Or earlier?
We could even do five thirty if you want to get out of here. I mean, not going to have any public in here.
Yeah, I'm up to you.
I mean, he's probably got to work. I mean, I can come in anytime. I don't really care. I don't work that much.
Up to you all.
At four, so I come anytime after four.
What about you?
I. Yeah, you can do that.
Well, five o'clock.
I could get, I can, it's hard to get here before five, but I could get here at least by five.
But.
Five thirty is fine. Five or five. Or five. I mean, I'd like to do it earlier than later.
So let's do five o'clock.
Five o'clock.
That works.
Twenty eight. Yeah.
Now, I will, I'm, I will put a a notice in the paper because anytime you all get together, more than three of you anyway, or three or more of you, you gotta notice it. And it'll be open to the public. It just isn't going to be a workshop to be like engaging.
We'll just try to really get it done in like an hour and a half, max, you know, just really try to.
We'll see how it goes.
Yeah.
As far as we can.
Yeah. I mean, I think if we really focus and we just go through it methodically.
Hmm.
I do have a question for you, though, something that you mentioned.
Yeah, yeah.
About the incorporation of the land use with the site plan review.
Hmm.
I mean, if we get the site plan review basically kind of where we want it,
Hmm.
see easiest way to incorporate the changes from one to the other.
I think.
That gonna require like, are we going to have to go through each one of the land use and site plan review? And try to mesh them together? Or is there an easier way to deal with producing that marriage between those two things?
I it, I think it's going to depend on what scale, how you want to do this stuff and and s- if it's just simply moving things from site plan, like if there's standards in site plan that makes sense in land use, you can just delete them in one and put them in another. Um, the kind of other end of the spectrum is just a wholesale new ordinance, just a lot more work, writing just a whole new ordinance, getting rid of this one and placing it with a new one. And then you can kind of do anything in between.
Would it, would it, it wouldn't combine the land use and the site plan?
You can. It's, it would be up to however, however you want, like.
That's kind of what my question was.
Yeah.
How to address that particular culmination in what part thereof? And do you keep land use or do or alter them both?
So I think um just from what I, now now that I've had a chance to kind of get familiar with the ordinances, I think possibly, unless you want to just like do wholesale um repeal and replace, probably what makes sense for moving forward and taking somewhat bite sized pieces so that it's manageable is focusing on getting the land use ordinance. You know, in into the place where you're like, yeah, this is, this is good. There's always going to be changes because the community changes and, you know, but get a good framework and a good land use, clear functional land use ordinance. And then you have things that that becomes the core and any other requirements kind of use that, refer back to that. Um, that way you have like all of your definitions kind of should be in one place. And then if you have a site plan review process, it can just basically build on what is in land use.
Refer to the land use.
Yeah.
Ordinance.
Yeah. So I think that that way also you don't have things you, 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 I would what you don't want is to start addressing things twice, like one in this ordinance and one in that ordinance. Even if you make it consistent in five years, one of them's going to change and that means now they're going to be inconsistent and then someone's going to come and say, I want to do this, but the land use says I am allowed to and site plan says I'm not. So that's where you know, trying to address things only once clearly, and then you have something that kind of can build off of it or, you know, addresses a different dimension of something. So you can have a design um, you know, ordinance that talks about, you know, whatever the design is, but doesn't say anything about land use. Um, and those are the two big things, right? It's like the use and the form.
Well.
So.
Is it even worth doing this?
I, yeah, I, I, yes, I think this is.
Should still.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, if if for no other reason is the what I'm talking about is like this, you know, there's, there's a, there's a lot of work and it's not going to happen in a year, two years or.
Yeah.
So I think that there's no reason to to you know, I I think that you want to move as quickly as possible, but also like it needs to be manageable. There's only so much time everybody has, so much brain with everybody has to be able to kind of So much time everybody has, so much brain with everybody has to be able to kind of review this. If it needs fixing, we should fix it, you just got to start with the higher priorities. And also like I am still very new to all of you, so I'm still trying to figure out. What you care about, what you don't care about, what the community cares about, the comp plan is gonna help with that a lot, but. As like the active participants in crafting. Uh, you know, land use ordinances, I want to, you know, know what you want and what you are, you know. What your perspective is on it, so.
As we go along, let's, let's start, um, there is a list somewhere, Isabel has it or you have it, of, of the big cha- the policy changes to the. That site. Ordinance that you. That she or you or, you know, we, we've mentioned over the, over the years. There are less, not the little tweaks, but the bigger issues. Um, I even forget what some of those were at this point, but Isabel, I think, was keeping a list. And. It would be really good to have that list at this meeting, at the next meeting. So we could kind of refer to it, look at it and, and, and have it in front of us and, and add to it, you know, as we go along.
So the, I guess a question that I have for you, and I'll try and find that, I know I've written some down as well, I'll try and find. Get whatever Isabel may have.
It could just be like a, like notes, you know, like.
Yeah.
A list of notes.
Well, and that's at this point, I think, anything that's not in here, you know, we, we won't have specific. Um, like language, say, this is what we were, what we're thinking, because it, which is probably, you know. The specific, the issues that you all are concerned about, if you're like, well, you want taller buildings, okay, that's fine, we can do that, you know, and then we would go look at. I can go through the ordinance and say, okay, here's where you need to change things and here's how I would suggest going about changing and here's the language that I would recommend. But if you all are saying taller buildings, then great, that's we want, or, or, you know, you want only narrow buildings, then, you know, I can go and figure out where. The regulations are that, that do that.
Okay, what? Don't, don't towns have a deadline to incorporate some of this ADU stuff, you know?
Yes.
Housing density, is that like next January?
That is.
Or twenty twenty-four?
Uh, July. I think it's July first, twenty twenty-four is when it has to be.
Okay, and so all, all that, that language and stuff, that would all be in. The land use ordinance, really not in the site.
Oh, I know some of it is, but I, I want to check and make sure that there's nothing in subdivision or site plan that also. You know, needs to be.
Because that, that's coming down the pike too.
Yeah. Yeah.
I think.
And that is, that one is a, I'm hoping will be a little more straightforward. Um, the, I, I can tell you like the current ADU regulations, just. We're gonna have to get rid of those because you can't, it, it just is too. You know, something, it's like.
Too complicated.
Yeah, well, it also just says like you can't. It is too restrictive from the state, but also there's some issues about like, you can only build an ADU if. Like one of the users is related to the owner and it's like, okay, well, there's, there's, there's like, there's a bunch of little things in there that I'm like. That is.
Yeah. All right, okay, that'll be the next.
So I don't think we want that. Um, but like I said, this is a bigger conversation, so I really just wanted to.
Okay.
Start it and say, we've got this, I think if you want to move forward with the current site plan. Review ordinance amendments, then we should, you know, we don't need to rush it, but we should move forward with that, we'll have this meeting on the. Twenty.
Twenty-eight.
Twenty-seven.
Tuesday.
Tuesday, twenty-eighth at five, correct? We said five, okay. Um, and we'll work through that.
Yep.
And then there, but also there's stuff that maybe we can say. We'll address this later.
We're just sideless.
Yeah.
But we might as well, so much work's been put into this, we might as well wrap it up.
Yeah, that's, I, I think so.
Yeah.
I will tell you, I did sneak two things in there because I was tired and I thought I, I would do it. One was. I, I put in some. Like. Tandem parking says, basically said like, there were somewhere that was. That didn't allow tandem parking, which is where you have like one parking spot and two cars basically in parking it. Um, and it was like the only time you can do that if it's like for a household, like if you're gonna have an apartment and they're gonna have parking, you can. Do that. My parents had a, a unit that did that and I was like, oh, you know, it seems like it works, it gets a little bit more, a little few more cars in there without. Much more space. I'm hap- I'm happy, anything that's in there that I added in, happy to take out, just wanted to throw it in there.
Okay.
See what stuck.
But when we go through, you can tell us what's.
Yeah, so I mean, it's, it probably may never come up and be needed, but.
Love tandem park.
Well, no, it makes sense, especially if it's within the same household.
Right, that's, that's, yeah.
And it reduces the amount of.
Correct.
That's where I, I was like, we can. You, you know, and it wasn't gonna, if it's in site plan review, it's not gonna apply to like single family houses, I mean, because they don't go through the site plan review. Um, and the other thing that I just want to float that might be a little bit more controversial is, I said that parking standards are. Not applicable in the historic C-one district, because parking there is, so anyway. You can think about that and we can add that or not if you want.
Yeah, parking standards are a difficult thing.
They are.
I mean, we, we actually require a lot of parking.
Yeah, I, I did notice it's like two units per, or two spots per, per unit, which. You know, I, I don't, I guess what I would say about the. You know, eliminating parking standards in the downtown, isn't like we're getting rid of the parking lot or any of the parking that's down there, but. It, the, I would. I would put money on, it's probably restricting any development down there, so like no one can really build because where are you gonna park it? There's just, there's nowhere to put the parking, so no one's building anything.
No, but it's a reality we have to face too.
Totally, yeah, yeah. So that's why, you know, that's the, the balance is like, well, do you want to? Say not, do you want to prevent development because they can't park it, or do you want to try and start? You know, addressing it in some other, some other way. So that one is. Uh, yeah, that's also a bigger conversation that. You know, and, and some of this is also, it's hard to, just for parking, I will try not to go off on too much of a tangent, because I'm happy to talk to you about parking. All day, but. The. It's hard to have each individual property owner. Address parking because it just ends up being very inefficient, so having a, like a shared municipal lot or a shared, even if it's a private lot, but shared between. Multiple property owners is just much more efficient, it, it works a lot better, which is what Damar Scott has got. And to a certain extent, with the exception of, you know, peak season and pumpkin fest and things like that, it's, seems like it's working, so. But we can discuss that.
It's all we got.
Right.
We're not gonna get any more.
Well. Yeah, that's.
So you'll email us when the copies are ready to be picked up?
I will, I'll, I'm gonna, I, I probably, it'll probably be on Wednesday.
He wants colored copies.
Yeah, no, absolutely, that's.
My old eyes are, I need to tell the difference.
And I'll, I'll make sure the font is not tiny. I think this is like nine or eight or something, and it was just because it was so much and I wanted to be able to get through it and. But I'll make sure it's readable, yeah.
Yeah, a little bigger than that.
Yeah, yeah. So.
Can I make a motion? To.
For what?
Close the meeting.
Isn't there a limit to the number of motions you can make?
Okay, why don't you make it?
I'm moving, we adjourn the meeting. If you just.
Yeah, let's third it.
So you're second in it, right?
Yeah.
All those opposed, spend the night.
Um, I do have these two, if you guys wouldn't mind signing quickly.